For the presentation.
Yes, to them.
Sure.
Okay, well. It is six o'clock on Thursday, February twenty third, and we will call this City of Lacey Joint Work Session with our Historical Mission to order. Can I get a motion for our agenda, please?
Move to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
This has been moved in second. Any discussion? Can see none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And there is there any opposed? Seems none. That motion passes, and it looks like we have an agenda. The first item on our agenda tonight is a presentation from Annette Pitts, who is the Experience Olympia and Beyond CEO. And she is here tonight to talk to us about our visitor convention, convention bureau.
That's right, yeah.
Well, then the floor is yours.
Thank you.
French op was successful with sports awards.
Yeah, yeah, we had a really nice sports awards. I think it was November number eight.
Yeah.
Um, so for you about the sports awards.
Yeah, that was one of your sponsors.
Thank you, so sorry. So guys, um, you're gonna have to forgive me because I've been here for not quite two years, and it has been a big flurry of getting to know everybody because I'm not from the area. So it's been trying to take it too personally.
No, no, no.
So I'm really excited to get to be here. Um, like I said, I've been here just shy of two years. Um, when I started, um, we really had a program that was at a standstill. Um, we obviously during COVID were doing what we were told to do, which was lay low. Um, but we really, we only had two people on staff at that time, and all programs were shut down. And so last year was really not only getting all of those programs back up and running, but it was rebuilding our board and really re-envisioning how we wanted to do business as an organization. So I'm gonna give you a whole bunch of information today. Um, probably more than you ever wished that I had, but I like to err on the side of transparency. And um, I think, you know, especially as a new person coming to the community, it's really important that we develop a rapport and a relationship so that we can trust one another, so that you feel like you understand uh, the work that we're doing, um, that you have a good sense for what's coming around the corner and why we're doing it in the first place. Um, I often like to use this analogy that you know, it's it's not enough to be invited to the high school dance. You want to be able to dance at the dance, and you want to help plan the dance. You know, so that's kind of how I look at all of these relationships. So you're gonna get a lot more than you ever hoped for. So the first thing I'm gonna give you, hot off the presses, is a copy of our twenty twenty-three Business and Marketing Plan. Um, I'm gonna also pass down just this little piece just for fun. It's a what we call our Experience Lacey Community Guide, something that we started last year. Um, we because we were at such a kind of an odd time um in tourism when I came on. Um, it was really an opportunity, not just to rebuild relationships and start our program, but to look at operating a little differently. And um, one of the things that I think, before I get into the weeds of this presentation, that um, is a little different, is that, you know, we're trying to really make sure that we are in lockstep with each of our stakeholder groups. Obviously, the City of Lacey is a really important stakeholder group. Um, we need to all be rowing the same direction if we're gonna get to the destination that we can agree, we all want to get to. Um, and a part of that is acknowledging that tourism is an important economic development driver, driver. I've been to a lot of uh, presentations as of late where we're talking about economic development. And I, I kind of zip it when I notice that tourism is not being mentioned. Um, and that, I think, is a glaring oversight. Um, and it's, and it's an innocent one, but it's one that I think I I find very important for this group. Um, you know, we were all here in twenty twenty, and we all know what it was like when we had to not go to our restaurants, our hotels and motels were not open for business. And it wasn't even for an entire year. But during that period, Thurston County lost over twenty million dollars in less than one year from not being able to have our industry operational. We lost over seven hundred jobs in less than one year, and we still haven't regained all of them back. So it's when I think about the role of tourism and economic development and how it pertains to this group, I really want you guys to think about the work that we're doing as an investment and thinking about you guys are investing in us. And so we're here to serve you, but we have to think about what is that return that that we can hope for if we're all working together? Because if when we stop for just a few months, we lose twenty million dollars, imagine if we ramp up what we could do. So there's huge upside potential. So there's my little spiel before we get into some numbers. Um, Nicole told me that I have approximately like thirty minutes for presentation and then fifteen minutes for Q and A. If it's okay, what I would rather do is not have you guys wait until the end of thirty minutes to interject any questions or comments or feedback. Otherwise, I'm afraid you might be asleep after thirty minutes of me just talking. And sometimes we don't happen to jot down our thoughts as we have them. So there's gonna be a lot of graphs, a lot of pie charts. Um, so please just interject as we go if that's okay. Okay, so we did something for the very first time this year. We, as with many firsts that we've done. Um, we really made this commitment to making sure that we are not taking on work purely for the purpose of the fact that we feel like it's a good idea. We don't want to do anything based on any hunches that we're like, yeah, I'm pretty sure that people want this, so we're gonna do this. We're like, I really like doing this, so let's do this. We took on a huge research undertaking this year. We've invested in a lot of research tools, and we also invested in bringing an in-house researcher researcher to our team. Uh, and for the first time, we did um, what we call our three hundred and sixty degrees sentiment survey, where we, for the very first time, polled our residents, asking the people who live and work here what they think about the destination and what a visitor might experience. Not for the first time, we asked our stakeholders. So we had stakeholders that have historically kind of weighed in on what they think about the area. Uh, we did that again. Um, last year was the first time we polled our visitors, and we did that again this year. So what we did is we, we asked each of these audiences effectively the same questions, so that we could see the differential um, and understand, okay, well, certain things are really important to our residents that aren't necessarily as critical to our visitors. And it could be vice versa. And that's kind of the thrust of a lot of the research that I'm gonna share today. So we were really surprised by what we found. Um, this research paired with location services that we have in-house now, moving, or excuse me, measuring traveler movement to the area, combined with um occupancy data from our motels and hotels, combined with, you know, Google Analytics, all of that primary and secondary research, is what got dumped into this year's plan. So that you can kind of flip through and, and look at this and ask questions as well. Okay, so some folks ask, why, why do we care about perceptions? Um, it's because what we believe about a destination colors our uh, attitude. And the attitude we have helps shapes our personality. Our personality drives our behavior. And that behavior is what counts when you're in the destination. Because we might have the best sports facility in the world. We might have the most beautiful lakes. But if you have a bunch of cranky people encountering your visitors and residents, doesn't really matter. So our perceptions about our experience are really important, and we want to know. So the first thing I'll give you is a little bit of uh, background about who we're talking about when I talk about residents and stakeholders and visitors. Um, we had a really good sample size. This wasn't just like ten, twenty people participating in the survey. We had over four hundred people, so a nice, healthy group. Um, when it came to our residents, the majority of people that responded were from the Olympia area. Um, we had just over twenty percent respondents were from Lacey. Um, just a little heads up, we're gonna have a lot of percentages in, in this presentation. And in my mind, I kind of go to student version of me, and I'm like, if it isn't a ninety percent, it's not an A. Like, I want the four point oh. I want a good GPA. And so what we're gonna do next year is we're gonna do this whole thing again after we've put a lot of effort in and figure out, first of all, we have to have more than twenty percent of our respondents be from, from Lacey. We need to have more balanced representation. So we're gonna look to our relationships um, to figure out how do we get more participation across the board, so we have more balanced um, feedback. Uh, when it came to our visitors on the right, this was really interesting to us because there is a perception locally that most of our visitors are just from Seattle, maybe Portland. It's not the case. Um, and we know that from our visitor movement analytics. We use location services to kind of track where people are coming from and where they're going. But we were surprised when we looked at the respondents that, you know, twenty-three percent of people who responded to this weren't even from the Pacific Northwest or California. They were from states outside of that area. On the left, you'll see the breakout of um, where our residents are working, so just so that can kind of color when we start seeing the feedback and say, ah, well, of course they thought that, they're in professional services or government. Um, and then on the stakeholder side, this is the breakdown of where um, these respondents came from. A lot of folks that are actually in attractions and experiences. We've got some nonprofit uh, and economic development, arts and culture kind of folks. Oops. Uh, this question we asked our residents, do you even know who our offices? Like, do you know what we do? Do you know what Experience Olympia and Beyond is? And um, most of the questions are gonna be about the destination, but I do think it's important for us you know, as a measure of our success in the community. Um, you know, I think we were kind of pleasantly surprised to have over seventy-two percent uh, say, yeah, they know who we are, but also again, that's a C. It's not what I aspired to in college. So we're gonna aim higher next year, and we're gonna build a lot of our work plan around to making sure that we have a lot more engagement with the community, so that there are ways for people to participate with us, so they know more about what we're doing.
I'm surprised it's that high, to be honest.
Me too. Me too. So I was really happy. But I'm not happy enough that it's not an A. I want at least ninety percent. So um, but it it's better than a pokonya. Um, okay, so we asked our visitors um, about their overall familiarity with our destination. And while we did have, you know, over sixty percent were at least somewhat familiar, it's, it's not good enough. And, and to tell you about like, you know, how did we identify who a visitor is, we basically, we were pushing out posts in social media markets that were not actively promoting it. We just want to know, like, do people even have us on their radar? Do they know? You know, where Washington State is, let alone Thurston County. So, you know, probably better than what we had anticipated for the randomness of how we targeted, but again, it's not ninety percent. So we know we have area to improve. We asked um, all of our segments. Now you're gonna start seeing more side-by-side comparisons about what was one word that you would use to describe our destinations? Um, there were some common threads. People think it's really beautiful here. It is really beautiful here. I'm new to the area, and it never ceases to uh, impress me when I'm going to and from work. Um, what I did think was kind of interesting was the word interesting was like, one of the most common responses from our visitors. It's probably not going to be our slogan, um, to the most interesting place in the world. But um, this is why we do these exercises, is to see what do people really think? Um, and where are their common threads? Um, when we asked folks about um, what is the one thing that they can find in our area that you cannot find anywhere else across the board, the number one that came up was the capital. And this is, this is a polarizing response, because we know, we have folks that say, you know, in tourism, you gotta hang your hat on what people know. Once you hook them, then you can bring them into everything else. And so that's kind of what that is showing us, by the word capital showing up across the board. But it's not everything. We also know that it's beautiful, it's unique. People like having a downtown. They like the waterfront. They like having access to Puget Sound. So just because we have some common threads doesn't mean that that's all that we're gonna put out there. Uh, we asked folks about what they think our greatest asset is. Um, we had a little bit of divergence, but um, obviously, our stakeholders love having access to water. That was front and center. But when it came to the people living and working here, uh, they, they love just the natural beauty of the area. Our visitors think, um, not only is it great, it's beautiful, it's a capital city, but also it's really friendly. I thought that was great to see. Uh, we asked folks where they visited when they were here. This is another one of those report card moments. We see we got a B, almost like a B plus, if we're trying to send folks to Olympia. So we've got a whole lot of improvement to do when it comes to dispersion. Meaning, once we get people here, we have to disperse them throughout the county. So that's gonna be a really important part of what we do this year, is not just they come here, but also when you're here, we gotta move you around. So being very itinerant, making sure we have itineraries developed um, that are specifically pushing people throughout the county based on their interest areas and what we have to offer is gonna be important.
What was, we can't see the top there, but what was the actual question? Because a lot of people may have been in Lacey, Tom Water, and not known it, and just, you know, they say Olympia because that's the name they know.
Yeah, no, and you're, you're one hundred percent right, because when the the kind of thing about tourism is people don't, people don't know where their boundaries are.
People that live here don't. So how do the world would visit?
I literally just said something was in Lacey the other day, and then I was wrong. So it was on the wrong side of the street. The question was, I guess, streets are a little different here.
It looks always on the right side of the street.
Yes, okay. I don't know, I don't know. Uh, the actual question, and I'm sorry that the thing is blocking, there's nothing I can do there, but we asked them, during your last visit, where did you visit? Um, which of these communities? And again, to your point, they may have been in, in Lacey, and they thought they were in Olympia. A lot of, a lot of these are gonna be subjective. Oops. Um, uh, this is important. Um, you know, one of the biggest trends that we're seeing reported in kind of industry publications is um, is in terms of why people are traveling right now. People want to go back to places they've been before. Everybody got stuck during COVID.
Nostalgia.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so it was interesting that uh, over eighty-six percent of folks have been here before, and they want to come back. And again, we asked it another way, just to kind of cross-check. Kind of tried to trigger our respondents a little bit, and it, it pretty closely balanced. Uh, this is an important slide. We asked folks, um, why did you come here, or why would you come here? And there is a sense out there that our area is a pass-through community, that people just come here because they're going somewhere else. It's not true. Um, we do have people that come here because they're going somewhere else. That is true. However, our number one driver, if people coming here, is because they have a connection here, and to your point, nostalgia. They have friends, and they have family in the area. Uh, they probably came here before to visit. They loved it. They want to come back. So we're gonna be using that messaging. And this is really important because we have to figure out, how do we leverage our locals? If most people are coming here to see their Aunt Ruth and their Uncle Joe, we best hope that Aunt Ruth and Uncle Joe have really positive things to say about this destination. And that we've informed them about how, what, what is there to do here? How do you get out into the community of Lacey um, and experience all the best things that there are? What are the events and festivals that are happening? So this is important. Um, this is important. Okay, guys, I'm gonna quit saying it's important. To me, everything's important. Obviously, this is very exciting. It's really important. I'm gonna stop. Um, but really, guys, this is important. Um, another thing that I hear a lot from folks is that, ah, people just come and pass through for the day. They do something for the day. Yeah, a lot of folks do spend a day. We've got forty-seven percent of folks spending the day. But that means over fifty percent are spending the night in accommodations. Or they're spending the night. I can track how much is in accommodations, but I don't have um, of the folks that are spending the night here, uh, sixty percent said that they're staying in a hotel or motel. Um, Airbnb slash VRBO, we call them short-term rentals here. We do track those and measure those monthly through our monthly uh, scorecard. If you're not seeing that, and you would like to receive our monthly scorecard, uh, I can put you on our email distribution list. It's also on our website under the words. So you can always know what our occupancy rate is, whether it's in hotels and motels or in short-term rentals. Right now, short-term rentals comprise eleven percent of the total rooms inventory within Thurston County. Um, it's up from eleven, or excuse me, it's up from eight percent as of last January. So it'll be interesting to see at the end of session if there is an impact there. I have a hunch there will be. Okay, now it's gonna get interesting. So in the next so many slides, we're gonna have our resident feedback in burgundy. We'll have our stakeholder feedback in green, and then our visitors in gray. And all of these, we asked them if they strongly agreed or agreed um, with the statements below about what that experience would be for visitors. Um, when it came to what people thought folks would feel in terms of feeling welcome during their visit, um, our residents were pretty pessimistic. They're like, eh, not quite sixty-nine percent would feel welcome. Yeah?
And can you remind me, who's in the stakeholders group?
Stakeholders is probably gonna be munis- municipalities. It could be whether you're an elected or staff. Um, it could be a nonprofit such as maybe the Olympia Downtown Association. It could be the Lacey South Sound Chamber.
Somebody representing an organization.
Yep, people we're doing business with. It's gonna be a little different than the Uncle Joe and Aunt Ruth. Um, we asked folks about, do you think people felt that they were safe during their, their visit? And again, our, our residents were pretty pessimistic. They're like, oh, maybe forty-five percent would feel safe. Our visitors said almost eighty-five percent felt very safe during their visit. Um, there's some common threads in here where our residents tend to feel a lot more negative than our visitors. Um, usually, our stakeholders are more positive than our residents. There's a few flukes, and we'll point those out. But I think because of where you guys sit and what you're here to do, and who you are often going to hear from, I'm guessing you probably don't have a ton of occasions where people line up to be like, I'm coming in. I just want to tell you the great things going on that you're doing.
So this research seems, tends to, to lean towards the visitors come from more dangerous places.
Well, and that is, that is a part of it, because when we got through all of this, we looked at our origin markets using our location services data. And you're not wrong. Most of our visitation comes from larger urban areas. And so when they come here, even though even though, when we live here, there are certainly things, especially if you're a long-term resident, and you've seen certain changes, you're probably, it's gonna feel pretty important and substantial to you, because not only you live here and you see it every day, but you've seen the change, and, and you maybe want to be a part of changing it back um, to however it was. But our visitors are coming from a different set of circumstances. And so it just, it tempers, you know, kind of, what is reality, and what is the role of perception in reality? And how do we message about it? Um, and more, I think, important than anything for our program is all of this data together tells me, it's not enough for our organization to just hold a megaphone out and say, hey, y'all, we got really good Indian food over here, you know, and right next to really cool things to do and, and beautiful lakes. Um, and we do. Uh, but we have to make sure that the experience that we have in the destination is the best that it can be. And we need to understand how do we relate to these residents and stakeholders who have these perspectives? Because they are, whether we want it to be that way or not, they are our number one ambassador. So um, across the board in all of these, you know, whether it's being treated with respect and dignity, uh, having fun during their visit, uh, encountering signage to easily navigate the community, our visitors really um, had much more positive experiences than we would have expected. But again, look at what the percentages are. I want eighties. I, you know, even though we've got, you know, eighty-six point five percent, eighty-eight point nine percent from visitors, I want it to be at least ninety percent. And then I also want to see how do we, how do we move the needle with our, our residents and our stakeholders? Because they really matter. Um, and I don't know historically that we've really prioritized that enough. So whether we have or haven't is up for grabs, but we're going to now. Um, I do think this kind of third from the right, having positive experiences with residents, is really kind of important. Uh, our visitors actually were lower than what our stakeholders had hoped, and that's not good. So we have to work on it. Uh, we hear a lot, not surprisingly, about um, perceptions around encountering homelessness and panhandling, parking issues, and challenges with public transportation. Again, our visitors had far less negative experiences, or far, far less negative perceptions about those experiences than what our residents and stakeholders would have. So this is really good news for me, as I'm trying to market, because I'm like, great. Um, but it's not good that our residents and stakeholders have these perceptions. So we need to be working in alignment with groups like you, uh, because you're doing the actual work. Is Annette going to cure the homelessness issue? Probably not. Um, but I need to be working with your organization to understand what is happening, and what are the positive messages that you're trying to put out that we can just amplify um, and make sure that we're being as efficient as we can be. This slide um, is kind of giving us an organizational gauge about residential understanding and sentiment. Um, for us, it's really important that people understand, um, you know, what the role of tourism and hospitality is. Um, I was surprised that our residents would, if we just kind of look at the top three, that they uh, said, yeah, tourism does help small businesses. Good. I'm glad that they understand that. It's important. Please shop local, support our locally-owned businesses. Um, our residents love our festivals and events. That's evident by, I mean, not only just the attendance at these events, but the passion behind the people that are running our lodging tax advisory committees. Um, our residents feel pretty strongly about the negative impact on tourism. So whether our visitors have that perception to the degree that our residence is, you know, maybe not shored up, but because it is that important to our resident, we have to, we have to kind of shine a light there.
I'm trying to understand that last, that last one that you said, our residents. Can you say that again?
So we have a difference of perception about the impact of homelessness on visitors. So our, yeah, our visitors didn't have nearly as strong of a uh, negative perception about the impact of homelessness on their stay as what our visitors, or excuse me, as our residents thought that they would.
Got you.
Yeah.
That seems to be an improvement, because I was on, I was sat on the VCB, I don't know, several years ago as Lacey's representative. And back then, we were actually doing, doing some surveying of, of visitors. And one of the top things we were hearing back then was that they wouldn't come back. We heard that a lot, and a lot of it had to do with homeless.
Yeah.
That's, that's a good improvement.
Good. I am glad to hear it. Okay. Um, then, contrasting, so that was residents. These are stakeholders, so folks doing business and kind of working with us. Um, their top three um was taxes generated by visitors support the development of amenities that make Thurston County a better place to live. Tourism helps local small business, and taxes generated by visitors supports important community services. So um, this is probably not real surprising, because a lot of these stakeholders are attuned to the lodging tax system and how those are awarded to the community. Does that make sense to you guys?
Mm-hmm.
So now we're gonna look at what actual perceptions are um, pertaining to very specific hospitality and tourism industry clusters that we all have. Um, and so this gives us again, a bit of a scorecard. We, this is about how well do um, we think our accommodations or lodgings are um, meeting the needs of our visitors? Are, again, our state, or excuse me, our residents have a little bit of low self-esteem about our local Our, again, our state, or excuse me, our residents have a little bit of low self-esteem about our local offerings. Our stakeholders tended to, in most, but not all categories, feel a little better than our residents. But our visitors had a much more positive perception about our accommodations across the board, whether it was friendly and professional staff, timely service, clean and hygienic, quality of lodgings, our stakeholders did have a lower perception than our residents on this. Accommodations with full conference services, our stakeholders felt a little less excited about our accommodations than our residents. But, and then in terms of the number of establishments, our stakeholders would like to see more. Again, if we're looking at Annette's grading scale, we're doing, you know, B level. Good job being friendly and professional, really happy about that. But when it comes to economic development, let's get some more diversified lodging establishments. Conference center, anyone? Then we did the same exercise for arts and culture. I'm not gonna read all these through. Probably ones that are most noteworthy is when it comes to the adequate number of establishments. I think that is kind of pretty low scoring. I think people want more opportunity to engage with arts and culture in the area. If I'm looking at my, if I'm looking at my grading scale of report card, these are not acceptable scores. You know, I want 90%. And so we've got some work to do as a community. And as a visitor bureau, I can't make more, I can't make more arts and culture venues. As much as I want to, I can't. So that's why sharing this data is important with all of our partners, is because you guys have influence that we don't. And when it comes to, you know, what's the lowest scoring one on here for visitors would be the quality of performance and shows. Our residents actually feel a little better about it. So, you know, we take some things with a grain of salt. Attractions and experiences, I think we're doing a little better on these. Again, I don't see 90%, so as a destination, we need to, we need to work on these. But if we're looking at the lowest score for attractions and experiences, I think it looks like the adequate number. Again, people just want more. They like what we have, they just want more of it. So that's kind of a good problem to have. Shopping, people love to come to Thurston County to shop. I know our residents would argue about that, but our, our visitors love it. They love our food, they love our shopping, they love our outdoor rec. And look at the customer service that people feel like they're getting. Hey, we got an A in timely service. This is good. Happy to see that. And we certainly have some higher scores across the board. It's interesting to me in the adequate hours of operation segment, it's kind of probably the area where in terms of retail, we could do a little better. I think that probably has to do with the fact that we do have, which is good, a lot of family-owned operations. And so there can be a little more flexibility as to are they gonna be open on a Saturday or a Sunday or into the evening, things like that. So that may, I'm speculating, that may play into that. We have really high marks on our natural areas and parks. Good for Lacey, you guys are kind of the parks capital here. Can't swing a cat without seeing a lake and a bunch of people doing fun things on it. These are good marks. I do want to see them get to at least a 90% next year. And to me, that just means we have to tell the stories more, right? It's not that there's anything wrong with how friendly our parks are. We just have to remind people through the stories that we tell that these are experiences they can have.
You see that our tourism has a cycle? And if it does, you know, is it now that four to six months worth of kind of better weather that we get? And this kind of represents, you know, I'm wondering, like, like, right now, do we have tourists here in the city this moment? And if so, is it a percentage of what we would normally see maybe in the May or June months?
So we absolutely do have seasonality here. But the, the good news and the bad news is that Thurston County has a really well-diversified portfolio of tourism types. People think immediately when you go to what is it, what is tourism and what is a tourist? They think about a leisure traveler. They think about somebody going on a vacation or doing a long weekend or, you know, they're staying in a hotel to do something fun. That is one small fraction of the pie. Also, tourism is business travel. Tourism is also sports travel. It's also people coming for weddings and reunions. So we may not be a destination that is like 95% leisure travel, like you would think of like a Leavenworth. But that's really good for us, because when consumer preferences change or the world changes in some way, you don't want all your eggs in one basket. But we do have a seasonality issue with leisure travel, which is that way too much of our visitation is occurring during August period. We, and that's kind of the beauty of having a visitor bureau, is because our festivals and events, right, are happening in July and August. I mean, we do have others throughout the year.
By the time you know the weather's gonna be good.
Right, you wanna guarantee you can have an out event.
Schedule a big event outdoor and what it might be raining.
But if you go back to that slide about why did people, about why did people come? It was like 12% was festivals and events. So it's good to have a visitor bureau that is promoting alternate options during, during other times of year so that we can push shoulder seasons and push those other markets to balance what isn't happening with leisure travel. So it's a bit of an art and a science. But when we, we're gonna be putting together, I think the city of Lacey actually got, requested a market intelligence report from us, which we're pulling from our location services data, then you're gonna see specifically where are people coming from and when?
Yeah, we, we went to a conference in November, October, Kansas City. Really decent hotel with a great conference center. And then we went through access and stuff like that. So I understand completely that, you know, the tourism can be business, it can be these other things. And it was freezing in Kansas City at that particular time. Like literally step out the conference center, don't go out there. But brave it to get to this place where we can do this activity, have some pretty cool activities. So I, I see how that, that can be, you know, it can be pretty much all year round. But I was happy to hear that, you know, our peak season, or should I say interested to hear that our peak season, you know, just so happens to be in August.
I'm curious also, you said we have a diversified portfolio, which is good. But how much of the visiting is wrapped around the legislative session? Because we are the capital county, and so people come here, they stay overnight in order to testify, you know?
Yeah. Session is important. I'm so happy that session is happening in person right now. Because I'm, we, when we're looking at our occupancy reporting, we're always a little, there's a little bit of a lag. And since session started, I think we're up something like 10% over last year or something like that. So it's, it's really good for a whole host of reasons. But I will say, when I go back and look at 2018, 2019 into 2020 and 21, where it was like lights out Irene, the difference, I was shocked that it wasn't as much of a piece of that pie as what I would have expected. It has huge implications on restaurants and shopping and meeting spaces, 100%. Because people are looking for places to have those conversations, go out to lunch, turn it into a bit of a leisure, business leisure getaway, maybe invite their family as well. So it's really important, but it is not as important as our culinary scene. It's not as important as our outdoor recreation. So it's, it's important to the overarching dynamic and the culture and keeping our restaurants busy and our meeting spaces packed. But because we're funded through lodging taxes and TPA assessments, I gotta put heads in those beds and a lot of folks are sharing family-owned short-term rentals. So am I, am I going too long?
No, would you have a question for you? The council already knows what I'm gonna say.
Okay.
Would you say that we, as a region or an area, could use more indoor activities?
159.99, 99%. Yes. I, I.
I'm shocked.
I know. Give me family entertainment centers, give me more museums, give me more arts, give me more indoor anything. And somebody is going to, somebody is going to create like a festival of rain. I'm serious, like celebrate, give me a festival of water, you know? Give me like a galoshes-a-thon or something. Because in my previous role, this is kind of dark and I'm getting off topic. In my previous role, we had huge wildfires, we had the Carlton Complex fire and entire communities were decimated, which was horrible. And we would look into a field and you would just see chimney stacks with, that used to have a house around it. And we would find, I would get calls from people, because there were people that came, they wanted to see, they wanted to see where everything burned up. They were taking selfies by burnt-out properties. And I just only share this story because there's a lid for every pot. People, I think, tend to go, oh, well, it's rainy and cold in February. Well, make some hot chocolate and wear a sweater.
And some ice cream.
Yeah, so I, I think there is beauty in the things that a lot of people can, it's all in your perspective.
People literally showed up to gather a cup of Mount St. Helens ash. Flew here for that.
Yeah.
He's coming to Oregon coast in the winter to watch the storms come in, right? And there's all, you know.
Yeah, all different kinds.
And also to just kind of encapsulate on what's missing or what can be added or not enough, inadequate to venues. Those are all the things that kind of inform us. And as we work on our comprehensive plans and our, you know, development and recruitment strategies, we have those things in mind to try to create those other opportunities. You know, the cultural, arts and cultural activities, as, you know, we're looking at expanding and developing a new museum. And that's gonna be fitting another venue that's gonna be highlighted and bring some of that cultural activity going forward. So there's a lot of pieces that, where everything, I'm gonna borrow what Grant always says, everything is connected. Is this work goes back into trying to create, enhance the current placemaking strategy so that when visitors do come here, they spend the night, they find these other things to do and they like it so much, they come back because they like that experience.
Yeah, so it, you know, we're growing to the size of county where we're gonna have to start putting some indoor, some event spaces, some indoor activities and stop sending all these people to Pierce County to spend their money that should be coming and being spent.
And using, you know, tractors like we have at the rack with all the various tournaments, people come in from out there for sports venues. What are they gonna do while they're hanging out for the weekend or while they're waiting for their next game to start? And these are the type of pieces, how do we communicate one, what we currently have? But how do we expand on those offerings so that they continue to come back to this community and experience it?
And Lacey in particular has a unique need in that, from my perspective, that you have so much access to, to lakes. You have so much access to trails. We have no bicycle rentals. We have no guided experiences. You can rent a kayak and go out into, like, I had it when I, I think it was like my first few weeks on the job, I had travel writers coming in who wanted to go, they were writing a feature on paddle and drink your way through the county, which was like, cool. But we had no guide. I don't know how to kayak. I had to fake it to make it and I'm like, oh, let's go out. We're going out into the sound and if I turn over, please.
There was the insurance covered with on that event.
Yeah, so, but in all seriousness, there's, there, when you're talking about incentivizing new business, there's, you know, there's big lift, you know, heavy capital improvement types of projects. And then there's light lift. And a part of it is just sharing that information and saying, you know, our visitors want to go on a bike ride. But when you're flying in from LA, you're not gonna have your bike with you. I mean, if you're coming in from Seattle or Portland, sure, you can stick it on the back of your vehicle if you're driving in. But our job is to have the biggest economic impact, which means we need to bring people from further away. They spend more nights, they spend more money. But then we have to engage them and give them a way to participate in, in the destination. And we have some places where we don't have those services right now.
Yeah, when I went to Spokane recently for a public health conference, I rented a bike while I was there and I rode all over town when I had some downtime and I spent money in a bunch of businesses because I had a bike, because I didn't have a car. So, yeah, that seems like a relatively light lift to offer bike rentals.
And a huge amenity for people who are coming from these larger urban communities. They're just used to it. And so it, in my mind, somebody is going to, somebody's going to do this. And the same thing with being able to get out on the water, whether it's the sound or a lake. Most folks, you know, there are boating tourists, you know, that will drive their boat up from California or down from Canada or whatever, or in-state. But most folks, I mean, they would love to get out on the water, but they're probably flying and renting a car and, or they're driving from a drive market. So I have no idea where I am on timing. Do you want me to?
45 minute mark.
Okay. So I don't have to, let me just zip through it. I'm not gonna go through all these. You guys have access to this, I'm sure that. Let me just, just tell you all of the data that's in here. Like I said, is what brought this project to life. We are going to be holding some projects coming up in this last slide. We do have some new things going on. This guide, we're trying to be a lot more organized about how we're supporting the work of our lodging tax advisory committees. If somebody is awarded lodging tax, whether it's through city of Lacey, Olympia, Yelm, Pumwater or the counties, we have a suite of offerings that we're providing everybody, it's a matter of course. And then we're trying to make it really clear so that folks know how to leverage these things. They're free, they don't have to pay us for them. So that's a new development that I'm excited about. And we talked a little bit about, you know, the visitor bureau wants to, obviously, we're gonna continue marketing our destination. We wanna bring people into the area and all the things that we've always done. But I think what we haven't effectively done to this point is really working with our partners to do the best possible job that we can to have an amazing destination experience, not just for visitors, but for the people who live and work here too. So we're gonna be holding two meetings, one in Lacey and one in the south part of the county. We're calling them community listening sessions. They're gonna be for folks like you who are our stakeholders. We want to, we wanna just kind of hear what everybody's priorities are. We wanna share information and see, you know, can we get some alignment and some agreement about working together? And identifying what are the things that we would or should try to work on together? Is it picking up trash once a month? Is it trying to develop new businesses like rentals or something? Is it, I don't know, whatever the thing is. If we can identify what three or less things that we can all agree to work on together, then we will integrate it into our work plan and our budget, you know, going forward. But we don't know if, you know, will there be critical mass? Do people want to work together on these projects? So that's what these two meetings are going to be. And we will certainly invite all of you to those and hope that you'll show up.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything?
I just wanna add, there's a couple of other things that has been being worked on. Is one is also the beautiful or bountiful byway planning effort, which is looking at the whole all the jurisdictions of Thurston County and basically showing all the various, you know, creative or cultural or food or, I guess, fermentation type of businesses that people can do the loop tour. And so we highlight some of the activities in Lacey, but also that's fit in the framework for, again, that future planning and placemaking and making sure all the communities are developing places that can be added to that, that experience. So that's one thing that's coming, coming out. And then also, you know, I just wanna mention to you that, of course, I think the council's aware that Councilor Kunkel is the council representative on the, on the visitor commission bureau board, as well as Sue Failish, who manages the rack facility and myself. And we're trying to create a little bit of connectivity between all the jurisdictions and economic development and all these different venues and tractors to try to create a little, like, as, as Ness been saying, is trying to create a little bit more continuity between these efforts versus everybody in their own silos and trying to, you know, might be going different directions in, in parallel. But now we're trying to create it all together so we all have a common vision.
And we know we're not gonna be experts on things that we're not experts in. But we can lend our resources to folks who are experts in certain areas and just work more like a team. It's such a close-knit community. And I can really attest to that as being somebody who's new here, it's really impressive. And so if we can kind of lend that to how we're approaching these issues, I think it's gonna be really successful, so.
Oh, if I may.
Oh, if I may, um, so hi, Annette. I was just gonna let you know that, uh, so next month, exactly one month from tonight is the Parks Board City Council Joint Work Session, much like we're doing the Historical Commission tonight. Um, but we've invited Jeff Bo to come and give a report on the Sports Commission piece of the VCB. So just wanna let you all know that that's coming up too.
As I was walking out the door, I'm like, are you talking about Ford? I'm like, oh, no. No, I'm not.
That's next month. So, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
So it looks like we've identified some gaps. Good understanding of, you know, I'm not gonna harp on transitioning from one type of community to another, but I am grateful that um, all the LTAC events are now um, part of your website. Uh, so that anybody, you know, who wants to know what kind of events we're having and if they're sponsored by LTAC, they are part of that. And, and on the LTAC board, each, one of the board members will be at each and every event. Uh, so that'll be fun. I hope that we can um, push this out because that'd be really cool for to get some, some uh, community registration on, on that. So we can kind of identify, maybe we have the same gaps, you know, um, from here to Plumwater to Yelm to that side of Olympia. I was gonna ask Jen, Jen, we ever had, we ever had boat rentals or kayak rentals or paddle boat rentals at Lum Lake?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Have we ever had any kind of kayak or paddle boat rentals at Lum Lake?
Yeah, we did um, before COVID. Uh, we did have, it was at least one summer. Um, I wanna say we tried a second summer. It was with a, it was a private contract. Um, and, you know, we did run into some pretty significant issues with um, we had the algae bloom and the smoke the year that, it was the last year that the contractor came out. Just a bad combination there of weather.
There's also been a, um, they'll do their catalog, uh, beginner and, and instructional kayak lessons, uh, and they've been holding that long lake park as well in the past.
What about guided fishing? I get, I get asked about this. Is there anybody that we can refer people to for?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
So uh, there's nonprofits, there's for-profits, there's just recreational guys that go out fishing all the time.
This is Ennis Montana.
Yes.
My family's in the Ruby Valley. They're in Twin Bridges, sorry.
That's also a good point too, is, is there's also a program called um, Tourism Ambassadors.
Certified Tourism Ambassador, CTA.
And so it's like a little training that, that they put on to, you know, for, try to talk about the friendliness and, and how we can promote this area's residents, as, as stakeholders, those type of things. There's a training about how to talk um, and present the area in that tourism light. And that's something too that you can create, like you just said, on, on a guided fishing tours. You can be an ambassador by just, you know, going out as a, or a nonprofit, but trying to get, uh, train and, and people to be able to interact with tourism. So we kind of continue to get that repeat business. And that's something available to anybody here, uh, anybody in the community here in the rest of the, let me know.
Because right now, the local ones go to Forks or, you know, um, down the highway twelve, the, the Willamette or Idaho or, you know, because it's just more supply than we have there.
Well, I'm hoping that as we um, continue to identify gaps, we find that this stuff up and going.
I, I have a dream that we're gonna at some point do a big uh, small business launch competition, like what is happening um, in some other areas. So we'll see. But I think, I think we've got some other work ahead of that. But I think I think there's real potential to start helping grow some small businesses that we know are missing. So.
Okay, well, in the interest of time, we'll move on to our next agenda. Thank you. Okay, uh, the next item on our agenda is our Historical Commission Work Plan Review and uh, our Director of Parks and Culture and Recreation, uh, Jen Burbage will be.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, we, we got started so fast, I didn't, I didn't get to, to announce a couple of things. Um, Councilmember Cox is with us. She's uh, with us remotely on, on June. Uh, and then uh, the mayor was able to make it. Councilmember Bo is also absent.
Looks like we've got some names here.
And if you guys don't, if you guys, why don't we do uh, introductions? Is that okay? Let's a little, just beyond our our typical time.
Yeah, stay back there.
So you guys mind if we start down here in this corner and work our way around? Okay. It ended on Rick Locken, termed uh, city manager.
Hi, I'm Robin Vasquez, council member.
I'm in Wyckoff, Vice Chair of the Historic Commission.
Lenny Greenstein, council.
Martha Miller, Deputy Mayor.
I'm, I'm, I'm the rookie at home for two months. I've been on this. I'm the Historical Commission.
What do you mean is at home?
At home.
Mike Stedman.
No, by that too.
Mike Stedman, council.
Chair of the Historical Commission.
Erin Quinn Balcho, museum curator.
Hi, Jen Burbage, Director of Parks Culture Recreation.
And then we also have um, Felicia, who is joining us remotely. And we have some other commissioners as well, so maybe be sure.
We probably don't have a.
Oh, good. Okay, um, Jim, do you wanna introduce yourself?
Sure, Jim Camber with the Park Foundation and assisted with the Lacey Community Foundation.
Thank you. And do we have Felicia?
Uh, Felicia hasn't joined us yet.
Oh, oh, okay. Um, do we have any other commissioners, uh, Gatz and Patani?
Go ahead, Tulai.
Hi, this is Tulai Patani, Commissioner on the Historical Commission Board.
And Kimberly Gatz, also on the his, uh, Historical Commission. Thanks.
Carolyn Cox, City Council Member.
Hi.
Thank you. Hopefully we haven't missed anybody and um, certainly we'll introduce Felicia once she joins. She is our new uh, museum coordinator. So we're really excited to, to introduce you. All right, um, with that, I just want to thank everybody um, for all their efforts this past year and also thank the council and the Historical Commission for coming together this evening. Um, this is a really exciting time to celebrate the twenty twenty-two accomplishments and look forward to the twenty twenty-three work plan. Um, we just so appreciate all the efforts by the Historical Commission. Um, and just as everybody knows, but just a quick recap that, of what the Historical Commission does. So they provide leadership in raising awareness of Lacey's history and preservation of local historic resources. Um, the commission guides the creation of public education and interpretive programs, encourages preservation of items and properties that are of historical significance and reviews nominations to the Lacey Register of Historic Places. Uh, we've consolidated our presentation into one slideshow, but we'll be passing the narrative around. So I'll start off and then we'll hand it over to our Chair, Keo, um, and then to Erin for museum report, and then I'll finish this off as well. So with that, I will uh, turn it over to you, Jim.
Okay, uh, good evening, commissioners and council. Um, it's my pleasure to present the Lacey Historical Commission's twenty twenty-two accomplishments and the twenty twenty-three work plan. Uh, you'll find these in your packets. And Erin will be touching on some additional items in the museum annual report after the, my portion of the presentation. Uh, most of our meetings have included a discussion of the plans and the progress on the new mu- museum project, which you'll see in this rendering here in the top picture. And um, Jen is gonna give a more extensive update on this project a little later in our presentation. But we wanted to point out that although the new museum is not yet built, there's been plenty of planning and work going on during the course of the year. And through almost every one of our meetings, we've had some discussion or some update on what we're doing. Um, what I'd like to do now is move on to some of our more immediate accomplishments. Um, so the first thing, uh, the Lacey Depot saw a lot of community activity this year. Uh, from the grand opening celebration on May twenty-fifth to the summer markets and entertainment. Uh, we expanded the Lacey Depot weekend rental opportunities from May through September. Uh, and which brought in thirty-eight hundred dollars in revenue, which was a seventy-one percent increase from the prior year. Um, as a personal example, I know that my grandsons attended two birthday parties at the depot during the course of the summer. Um, for twenty twenty-three, the depot rental season will be further expanded with the addition of two months on the shoulders, April and October. And as a result, its rental season will then mark those of our other park uh, shelters. Rentals will now be available also on weeknights in addition to weekdays. Um, city staff met after the twenty twenty-two season and determined that this change would likely increase visitation to the Food Truck Plaza rather than to track from, which was the concern that we'd had. Um, moving on to where we're on with grants, uh, this slide shows the grants we've received or made progress on in twenty twenty-two. The staff wrapped up the work on the Heritage Capital Projects Grant for site construction in June. Although we're continuing to submit related reports and reimbursement requests. Um, we worked on a five thousand dollar Thurston County Heritage Grant to continue work on cataloging the Lacey leader negative selection. Um, with project staff residing in the middle of the year, we made the decision to ask for an extension to the project rather than asking for another round of funding and hire an intern to finish out the work funded by the grant. Uh, that work is now complete and the final report on reimbursement will soon be submitted. Um, we received our usual uh, sum of forty-eight thousand five hundred from the logic, lodging tax funding for operating funds. And I deliberately skipped down because the next one leads to the next slide. Uh, staff completed the five thousand six hundred and, six hundred and sixteen dollar diversity and local history grant, which funded an intern to work on the Jackson interpretive marker and to begin collections audit on marginalized people. The celebration highlighted in our next slide is a direct result of that effort. In early October, we honored local black athletes, Thoma and Nate Jackson with a dedication of their historic marker and a mosaic art piece, which you can see in the backdrop there um, at the Lacey Community Center. There were about sixty people in attendance, including myself. Um, as you know, weather in October is always a bit of a gamble, but early October is usually better than late. And um, because it was a warm evening, at the end of the dedication, we, many of the attendees enjoyed the walkout to the trail where they could actually see the marker itself. It was a great celebration. The Jacksons were very pleased. Uh, I'm actually kind of an expert on October weather because I have a son born on October fifteenth. And his birthday has never been rained on, but every day around it has been. So I really know October. Um, moving on to slide six, um, this gets, goes into our twenty twenty-three work plan. Um, again, the full work plan is included in your packets, but I'd like to highlight a few significant items. Uh, we reviewed and updated the museum strategic plan. This document is also in your pro, in your packets. The commission will be continuing to identify properties for inclusion on the historic property inventory in twenty twenty-three. We also hope to narrow down some potential properties that could be added to the historic register. Um, the, I have actually a little bit of experience in that process because I had a house placed on the historic register in Olympia. Um, the commission has begun the process of reviewing the twenty twenty-three update of the Parks Culture and Recreation Comprehensive Plan, particularly the areas which pertain to historic preservation, the museum and history. Um, in October, the commission was represented at the Thurston County Historic Commission's Annual Heritage Day. Um, we made a presentation of our efforts, particularly the museum, and looked for opportunities to connect with other historic efforts around the county. And then finally, I wanted to share a bit about the Rack Kiosk Project. Um, I'm the representative from the commission on that committee that's working on that. Um, we're working with the Thurston County Historical Commission to place historic information in a high-traffic area at the rack for the community to enjoy and learn about the area. Um, we expect the kiosk to have six display panels and each one will provide history on a local topic. Uh, the RAS Kiosk, Rack Kiosk Committee is in the midst of developing those plaque narratives. Uh, we just recently had picked up a volunteer who's gonna help with some of the design on that. Um, and we're pulling together photos to be used and uh, putting together mockups for reviews. The potential panels that are furthest along in this project, and we're kind of seeing which, and I have to see how those all develop to decide which ones you're gonna put up. Um, the Evergreen Ballroom, a joint kind of uh, coverage of the Squali Tribal History and the Medicine Creek Treaty, um, Ostrom's Mushroom Farm, Lacey Museum, uh, is again, kind of a combination, the history of the rack and kind of the predecessors to that, the area like Bucknell Fields, that type of thing. Um, the Lacey Race Track and Fort Lewis. That concludes my end of the presentation.
Where at the rack is this gonna be?
Um, oh, go ahead.
It's, it's gonna be out on, we, we originally looked to try to put it at the corner of the softball fields just because you have so much foot traffic there. Uh, I used to play softball at the rack all the time too. Um, and, but we ended up finding that uh, from an engineering perspective, we couldn't quite get a, a, what would you say, a horizontal enough place to put it uh, without having to put in steps or ramps or something. So we ended up deciding to put it further down in, off, off the parking lot near the bathrooms.
Still pretty high traffic.
Yes.
Area.
Yeah, so not near the pavilions and stuff, so right over there. With the covered areas or in the, you have the bathroom.
Yeah.
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 That's a pretty high traffic.
Yeah, and we're, we are also working on the um, MOU with the Thurston County Historical Commission, uh, similar to, you know, like the Gold Star Monument, determining who will do what moving forward. So. Yeah, and so um, uh, thank you, Cherokeeo. And he mentioned that the work plan is in your packet. Um, something that has come up after the work plan uh, was approved by the Historical Commission and before tonight, um, it's come up recently, resurfaced, the McKinney House, some of you will recall. Um, this is something that actually, thank you, Erin, she did some research. It made it to the draft twenty twenty work plan for Historical Commission, but then two things happened. We um, quickly realized it was not annexed, uh, that, that piece of um, the Lake Close property. Uh, now, uh, habitat property. And then the second thing was COVID that came along. So uh, so that one never made it to a final draft of the work, of the work plan for the Historical Commission. But um, it has come up again. It does, this item does exist right now in the Parks Culture Recreation Comprehensive Plan in the kind of further down the line, um, things to look into, projects to look into. But um, what I would propose tonight is um, to, since it's come back up, is to uh, kind of restart that, um, just researching and planning, just to see what potentially could be done. Um, you know, as you know, there's a lot of projects already, so it wouldn't be a matter of um, bumping anything else out with it, but um, it seems reasonable that the Historical Commission could do, start doing some planning on that. Um, so we were, we are looking for a motion to accept the commission's twenty twenty-two accomplishments and twenty twenty-three work plan. So I would um, submit that maybe it's the, as amended, if we add the item in that I just suggested.
So moved.
Second. What's the movement? Seconded and normally we don't really take a whole lot of action at, at our work session meetings. And um, with two members gone, uh, it's even more interesting that we would be attempting to take some action. Uh, I don't know that those two would have any opposition to that action. Normally like with, you know, we would like this to go in front of the en, the entire council. So.
We, we do always, we, it's pretty standard though for us on the, on these joint work sessions with each of them wanting to take action on their work plans.
One, three weeks ago.
We pretty much always do those at work sessions. It's pretty much standard.
Joint work session, to do the joint, I think, mission work program. Historic Board, Parks Board's be coming up. Well, if everybody's in agreement, and Councilmember Cox, are you also in agreement?
Yes.
In agreement, take action on this item tonight. Okay, well, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, so I will not block any further. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, seeing none, that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Um, and we are, we will move along with our presentation. I'd like to pass the um, narrative over to Erin.
Okay.
For the Lacey Museum twenty twenty-two annual report.
Thank you so much. It's so great to always come before you once a year and be able to share a little bit about what we're doing. So I appreciate your time and in doing that. Um, so our biggest challenge this year was staffing. Um, we spent half the year without support staff and our longest-serving volunteer retired. And since there was only one. And since there was only one person, me doing everything, I was just kind of keeping things afoot. But on the positive side, if you want to go then. On the positive side, we did have five volunteers this year who together gave five hundred and eleven hours to the museum. And we had two paid interns funded by GRAP projects that Jim already mentioned. But my favorite news, of course, is that we were able to hire a full-time museum coordinator, Felicia Rova Cameron. And I don't know, is Felicia there yet?
I am, hello.
Hello. Do you want to turn your camera on so you can see your face? You don't have to, but. Yes, it's on the screen. All right. Well, I am so glad Felicia's here, and if she looks familiar, it's because she was the museum assistant, a part-time position that we had a couple of years ago. I do want to take a moment here to thank Jen publicly for her support throughout the year. It was a very challenging time for me personally, and we would not have this coordinator position if it weren't for her and her commitment to us as her staff. All right, next slide. So with COVID closures behind us, the museum was finally open all year this year. Although we were closed twelve days due to staffing shortages, we did have four hundred and fifty-six visitors onsite at the museum. And for the first half of the year, we had two exhibits up, writing a wrong Japanese-Americans in World War II and From Parlor to Podium, which was about the path of women's suffrage in Washington State. And in May, we installed nineteen sixty-eight, the year that rocked Washington, which you're familiar with if you were in City Hall at all, because it was half up here. And that came down a couple of weeks ago. And so now let's talk a little bit about how our attendance has been going. So this chart compares attendance from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-two. I pulled out the numbers for two thousand and nineteen, which is the year that Sasquatch came to town. Those numbers are just so high that it makes all the other years look tiny, so. I did include the numbers down there, though, so if you want to see what those are, they're there. The green bar represents walk-in attendance at the museum, and then the red bar is attendance at our programs. And then the gray bar combines those two together. And so if you just kind of look at the general trend, you can't see the end of the gray bar, but it goes up. So I think it's also worth noting that our overall attendance this year is higher than in two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen, when we were still doing a popular one-day in-person museum event that drew three or four hundred people in one day. And two thousand and sixteen was the year of our fiftieth anniversary, which drew a lot of people in because we had so much promotion about Lacy history. So I feel like it's a really good trend that we're having. We're seeing a lot of people. This year, we also continued our popular history talk speaker series and had four hundred and thirty-three people in that program. This is a significant drop from last year, but we had one program last year that was really, really popular. And so I think that really accounts for that difference. But we very easily made up for that shortfall, though, with, we had a virtual tour of the Ruddle Pioneer Cemetery Cemetery, and if you haven't seen it, it's on YouTube, you can still watch it. We contracted with Pretty Gritty Tours, who researched and hosted the event online, and they did a great job. We had a hundred and eighty-five people live as well as two thousand post-event views. And I really feel like it reached a much more regional audience than we usually do, which was pretty cool. Jim mentioned our two events that we had this year, the Depot Grand Opening and the Marker Dedication. So with all of our programs and events combined, we reached seven hundred and twenty-three live people in person and had six thousand three hundred and forty-two views on YouTube. Just as a side note, I did include Sasquatch numbers for YouTube because that's also off the charts. Hundreds of thousands, I think it's the city's biggest watch of views on YouTube. All right. We filled forty-two customer service requests last year, which is a twenty percent increase over last year, but it's still a long ways from our seventy to seventy-five requests that we would see before the pandemic. So these requests, just so you know, are photo orders, audio orders, image use requests, research requests, and public records requests. And staff spent a hundred and sixteen hours or fourteen and a half days working on these requests last year. A few highlights of the projects we worked on are shown here. At the left there is Bill Gallagher, who was a Lacy boy who was on the Olympia High School football team. He does not look like a high school kid to me, but if you don't know, Lacy didn't have a high school then, so they all went to Olympia High School. And then in the center are Hazel and Emily Hicks, who are daughters of Pioneer Gwen Hicks. And that was part of a family request for all of the photos, and we have a lot. This last one is my favorite. This is a picture of Camp Travis, which is a campground that was near the Evergreen Ballroom, east of Marvin Road on the Pacific Highway. A customer had a door that came from the building supposedly and wanted to post the history of the business with a photo next to it. And he gave me like the super Vegas description, and I don't know how, but we were able to figure it out through historic photographs, and we got the window. It was really cool. So another thing I'd like to point out is that only twenty-three percent of our external customer requests were from Lacy. Forty percent were from other parts of Thurston County, and fourteen percent were from the rest of the state and the country. And this supports something that I say a lot, which is that our audience and our customer base is not Lacy alone, not by a long shot. We get a lot from out of the area. The museum has taken in at least seventeen acquisitions this year, representing about two hundred items. But to be honest, I have not logged in all the acquisitions for last year, so I think there's probably more than that. We continue to work on collections, adding a hundred and thirty-five items to the database. Thank you, Jim. Jim is one of our volunteers. And scanning five hundred and seventy images. Almost thirty-five hundred images were processed and added to the database this year, thanks to the interns. And although I wasn't able to process those two acquisitions, I was spending a lot of time at the museum, so I did get a lot of inventory work done. And we added forty-five hundred items, oh, forty-six hundred items. Didn't match them up, forty-six hundred items to the collection. And my favorite acquisition this year were the door handles from the Sears Building. So that's pretty cool.
Thank you.
Yeah. And now we can turn that back over to Jen.
Yeah, thank you, Erin, and before I continue, I just want to thank our museum staff, they're awesome. Erin just does such a great job, and as you can tell, she's great about capturing all the data and being able to share that out, so really appreciate that. And and just super excited to have Felicia onboard with us. She comes to us from a lot larger museum operation after she left here last. And so it's really great to have her be able to come back and share some of her insights with us. So next, I'd like to do a project update for the new museum. Here is an overview of where we are in the project. And so, as you know, we're done with phases one, two, and three. So we are on the heaviest lift of all, which is the building and site construction, finishing the exhibits design, and then the exhibit as well. So the funding plan is in progress for that. I wanted to make sure and highlight our funding partners to date, so the Washington State Circle Society helps fund phases two and three, and the Lacy Rotary Club, of course, with their fifty thousand dollar contribution for the playground and the in-kind to help to construct that. We have Lacy Fire District Three coming in at twenty-five thousand dollars for the exhibit design. And then the Squali Indian Tribe with seventy-five hundred dollar contribution to get us our Salmon Safe certification. Full photos for the phase three that we just finished completing in two thousand and twenty-two. There's a photo of the museum site clearing and prep. As we already said, the phase three was funded with by the Circle Society with the six hundred and eight thousand dollar grant, along with the match from the city. And then we did the cultural resources survey, and we are, we worked toward no further action, which we almost, almost have. We've been told by ecology that it's very highly likely there will be no further action, but we just need that letter. Yep, and then we have a time-lapse video, which is a view from the depot, and actually. If you haven't seen this already on our website. So just kind of interesting, they made it look so easy, right? There we go. This is a fun one to show, an old photo of the industrial use at the site. And oh, how the site has changed. So here's a current photo, well, from the summer. And so things are going really well with the Depot Market and Food Truck Plaza. Thanks to the team efforts of Community Economic Development Department and lots of lots of help from our Capital Projects team and maintenance in parks and public works. And so we did get some estimated numbers from our Community and Economic Development Coordinator. Non-event days during the summer, we had approximately a hundred people per day coming to visit the site. Probably about half that during November and December in the, you know, worst weather season. On event days, approximately a hundred and fifty people visited. We did have a couple of car shows. There were up to two hundred people for those events. And then for the three pop-up market events, up to three hundred and fifty people. It's really nice having people over there visiting the site. And for two thousand and twenty-three, Community and Economic Development is increasing the number of market events to fourteen. So there'll be a significant increase there. There will be one during the week and one on the weekend for seven weeks during the summer. So that makes the fourteen, and they'll be contracting out help in operating these events. Here's that full-site rendering as a reminder of where we're going. And focus for this facility is the cultural heritage of our region. So consulting with our tribal partners, then the Squali and Squawks and Island Tribes has been and will continue to be an important component of the project. Erin worked really closely with them on these nine lodge poles that you can see in the welcoming plaza, and that represents the signatory tribes of the Medicine Creek Treaty and also acknowledges that the land the museum is on was once traditional lands of local tribes. Other focuses for this facility and its programs are equity, inclusion, and accurate education. Museums continue to be viewed as institutions that provide trustworthy information. So I'm just going to show a couple renderings for anyone who hasn't seen them. This is the main gallery. This is the event space. And this just kind of showcases excitement for history, art, cultural, and heritage programming that can take place at this new facility. This year, our main focus is the funding plan, and you've seen this slide before, it has been updated. But just to show you an overview of the funding category, funding categories, you'll see the total project cost there on the left in the green. And then you can see in each funding category how far we are towards the goal. And I will just briefly run through them. Obviously, the city funding category is city funding. The state and federal funding is the heaviest lift of a category, and that's the one that we've talked about. We'll take a village, it's going to take our council members, our commissioners, our, you know, Park Foundation of Thurston County and our Lacy Community Foundation to all advocate and help put those puzzle pieces together of what the funding can look like for that heavy lift. And then the private corporate foundations, that is a Lacy Community Foundation category. There are monies that the city isn't eligible applied for, it needs to be a nonprofit, so that's where they come in. For that category, sponsorship and community partners is a city category. Individual donations can be either city or Lacy Foundation, but makes more sense to go through Lacy Foundation. And then there are, there's another grant category. And then this slide here just shows side by side the city and the Lacy Community Foundation and and sort of that timeline, you've seen this before. But it just shows what we've been working on, both parties, and what we see working on moving forward. And with that, I want to, I can go back on these, too, if you want to take a closer look. But I definitely want to give Jim the floor with the Lacy Community Foundation. Jim, if you want to share, yeah, sorry about the formatting up there, but.
No problem. Do I sound okay? Great, wonderful. So well, thank you so much, Jennifer, and nice to see you all, council members and commission members, and thank you to the commission. I served on the Thurston Historic Commission, and I know how much work you put in to these important aspects of preserving our cultural and heritage sites. So thank you for that. In in just representing the Lacy Community Foundation today in the absence of the mayor or the first lady as they're out of town, I did want to, you know, touch upon, build upon what Jennifer was just talking about, and Jen does such a good job at this stuff. I want to add to the team of people who've already said that. But the prepping for the raising of private funds is is absolutely vital. And in the partnership, so I wear two hats. I helped Andy and Becky with the the initial money for the Lacy Community Foundation, but I'm also an ongoing team member of the Park Foundation of Thurston County. So I'll speak to a little bit of both of the aspects of our work, and Jen, if I'm hit in time, definitely let me know. But as you, as you look at that private funding aspect of your beautiful new facility that you're planning, what you realize, if you've been in this fundraising business for capital as long as I have, is that you need it, you need an outside group to help with that, and you probably need an outside team to help with that fundraising, outside of the staff, of course, of the city. But to get those big, big grants, they have to go through a nonprofit end. And so this is what the mayor wanted to establish with the Lacy Community Foundation, in part partnership with the Park Foundation. So we do have an existing contract as the Park Foundation with the city of Lacy, among others, which I'll speak to in a few minutes. But I wanted to hit some of the highlights this year as you begin to look at how you could fund that private aspect of this beautiful facility. We have been prepping to raise these funds, and Mayor Ryder suggested that we start by raising just a hundred thousand dollars, just get a pot of money for the Lacy Community Foundation. They needed a spot to place that money because they didn't have bank accounts and such. The Park Foundation, of course, with our existing relationship with Lacy stepped forward. And now we have the Lacy Community Fund at the Park Foundation of Thurston County. It's a set-aside fund. The Park Foundation is not charging any fees at all, which they do, you know, do accounting fees for other other groups, depending on, you know, the dollar amount. So his goal was to raise a hundred thousand dollars. I'm happy to say we raised about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so we exceeded our goal quite a bit. Of course, you all probably know that he tapped the first lady of Lacy, Becky, to be the president, and she's done a fantastic job. I think we've recruited three or four new board members, including the chairman of one of the local tribes, the Squali tribe, Willie Frank, to join that board of directors. So it's going to be a pretty impressive board of directors of key individuals from the city of Lacy and important neighbors to Lacy. We did twenty-three individual meetings as a group, as Andy, Becky, and I sat down with key donors in your area. We had two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in ask, so you can kind of see how you have to ask for a whole lot to get kind of the number. We had two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in ask, so you can kind of see how you have to ask for a whole lot to get kind of the number. We, we, you know, we asked for about a hundred thousand more than we actually received in commitments and, and dollars in the door. Uh, this recently, very recently, we received our five oh one C three status. And I do want to just call out because it's important, and I've heard other people on various aspects of, of your, your meeting today, uh, individually identify people who are significant. We established between a ten and twenty thousand dollar gift, that individuals would be listed or their businesses would be listed as legacy Lacyans. Um, and I want to just call out there, it's, it's a shortlist, uh, that did this amount. MJR Development, Capital Heating and Cooling, BNR Flooring, Capital Development, of course, the Bloom Family, uh, Frank Kirkbride, and then also Chris and Bethany Bloom. Um, then some community members you may know well, uh, were, but below the late legacy Lacyan, uh, uh, level, but were also generous supporters, Ruth Weigalt, uh, Kevin Hayward and Lynn Hines. So those, and of course, Andy and Becky, uh, as well, just with their great support. But if you patronize any of those businesses or you run into any of these people, please thank them for this initial investment in helping Lacey, uh, establish this, this, uh, important foundation for your work. Um, so I think the next big steps, um, as I understand, uh, that Becky and, and Andy are, are planning are to extend their agreement with the Park Foundation, which I'll, I'll reference in just a second. And, uh, bring a, a more, a, a more robust plan for the foundation forward, uh, to the city council for their consideration. Um, and they're going to, of course, want to hire an executive director and continue to build that board, which is our, as I said earlier, looking pretty darn impressive so far. Um, so before I take off the Lacey Foundation hat, um, and speak to the Park Foundation relationship, um, I wondered if there were any questions about any of this work. Okay. Oh, sure.
I just wanted, at a point of clarification too, with, with the, the role of the Lacey Foundation as a private nonprofit entity is not tied to the city of Lacey in any way, say, um, and it's not tied to the council. So it's one of those, uh, versus community organizing and, and all private and not related to our city efforts on the city side and the public side. So I just want to make that distinction in, in this formation of the Lacey Foundation is strongly a community effort.
It is, it is a community effort. Yes, that's right. Um, then, then if I may, I'll speak, Jennifer, do I, am I doing okay on time?
Uh, maybe just a couple more minutes.
Okay, well, I do want to just thank the, uh, the, uh, certainly the council members and others involved. The, the Park Foundation of Thurston County is the fiscal agent for the Lacey Community Foundation. We remain in that role and I believe we're going to continue, uh, for quite some time to be that, that accounting and reporting and of thi- this work. Uh, but I do want to speak to the incredible work we're doing, uh, in the city of Lacey and other places. Um, and I'm just proud to say that we are supporting Jen and her efforts with that private financing piece and attempting to bring in private dollars and coordinate foundation grants and such on both the Food Forest and of course the Gray Cuyo Park. Um, we did also support the city of Lacey with a five thousand dollar contribution for scholarships for youth to attend camps. So in partnership with the city, we're able to bring these private dollars to support the projects of the city. Um, and it's, you know, in, in your case, uh, with the Historic Commission, you're doing such a wonderful job with your grant writing. But Jen's, Jen's a one, one woman show in terms of running the whole thing. And, uh, unlike, you know, uh, uh, Olympia that has, you know, five or six staff people in that office, you know, writing grants and such. So we're really attempting to support her in those other activities that support the community at large. And then we're working in every major city in the county. Um, we've, we've done some amazing work in Yelm, amazing work in Tonino, uh, supporting, um, Lacey, Olympia and Tom Water. And then Thurston County, and, uh, we are entering into an agreement most likely with Thurston County to support this work overall. Just one quick, one or two quick highlights of some of that work in other communities as we ramp up in Lacey. Um, we were able to help secure a two-point-three million dollar RCO grant for Yelm to finish a part of its trail, which connects Lacey to Yelm and then will connect on to Pierce County. Um, so that is an important section of a trail that will start at the coast and end at the border of our state eventually. Um, it's a, um, bicycling trail and horse trail and, and, and a walking and running trail. It's a really neat thing. We actu- we, the Park Foundation actually wrote that grant for the city of Yelm. Um, right now, we're advocating in Olympia, uh, for a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, uh, for the Tonino Stone Carvers, uh, at the request of the mayor of Tonino, to renovate their facility, to be able to provide their stone carving. Um, and we've supported our RCO grants in, 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 uh, Olympia as well. So just to kind of give you a touch on the great work we're doing in conjunction with the Lacey Community Foundation and in, uh, supporting all the great things that are happening in, in Lacey. So any, any questions about any of those pieces? Jen, anything I missed that you wanted me to cover?
Well, I just want to say thank you so much. And, um, yeah, he's mentioning some of the park side of things rather than the historical items. But, uh, super appreciate the Park Foundation of Thurston County's support. It's Parks, Arts, Recreation and Culture of Thurston County. If anybody doesn't, isn't familiar with that acronym, um, but just as an example for the, uh, you know, for the Great Cuyo Park project. We're, we're trying to tap into some REI funds and so I just kind of pitched it over that, their way and say, hey, help. So, and we're, and over into the more of the park stuff, but, but super appreciate it. And, and does anybody else have questions for Jim? While he's here.
Well, we, we'd certainly love you all to, to join the, uh, Lacey Community Foundation if you'd like to make a donation, just let us know.
I was just going to say thanks, Jim, Mike Stedman, and, uh, you know, you know my number, I'll be happy to pledge.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. Nice, nice to see. I can't see you, you're tiny on my screen, but you're big in my mind, council member. Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
And then, um, just to highlight some of the, um, smaller grants that weren't on the other screens. Um, this probably tried charitable, Spox Island Tribe charitable humanities of Washington Stories Fund and the Thurston County Heritage Grants. Um, we just, it, it's very important as we move forward with this project and particularly in that, you know, funding category that it's going to take everybody, um, using consistent messaging. And some of those, in addition to, uh, some of the things we've already covered about the museum and cultural center are the climate initiatives. Um, that it's a long-term economic driver. We've talked a lot about that, uh, once things get established around, uh, once it gets built and then some of the businesses get established around that area. Um, that it's also an outdoor playing education opportunity, not just indoor. And then the super important is the local partnerships for education with our school district and our colleges and really establishing field trips program that we can finally have enough space to do. And, uh, internship programs and things like that with the college students. Um, huge shout out to our champions and volunteers. I won't read through all of them, but they're, they're listed, listed on the screen. Just to highlight, sorry, there's a bit of a delay. Our next steps, obviously phase four, um, continuing our community outreach, continuing our strategic planning and securing our funding, putting those puzzle pieces together. So with that, if you'd answer any questions.
I, I gotta look at your, um, your goal sheets. Uh, six different categories and just a lot going on there.
The strategic plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so I, I know you're going to be reaching out for a lot of help with, with this much stuff, uh, which is the exact reason why I asked Benette to stay for this portion of the meeting. Because when I looked at this, uh, yesterday and then again today, uh, I, all I could think of was how can we get more engagement uh, with this? Because there's, there's a lot going on there. And then, uh, in terms of the Lacey Foundation, um, you know, I knew about it, but I'd never been invited to any of it. Uh, and I, I think it was kind of one of those things that was, uh, the council wasn't really privy to unless somebody has some other, well, something else to say about that. Because we, it's been so outside of this chamber and outside of this group that, you know, when you guys update us, this is the, we're, it's like we're getting it for the first time. And so, uh, that's cool that they've, that they've raised, raised that much money. I remember going to the, uh, the Saint Martin's, uh, event, it was called One Saint or All Saints.
Yeah.
The, the, the dinner.
All Saints Day.
All Saints. And they had raised somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty-two, eighty-six million dollars. Uh, they, they kept flashing on the screen because it was like this big number. I'm like, how did you guys get all that money during COVID?
That was during a multi-year campaign to raise a hundred million dollar campaign to, yeah.
Yeah. Very impressive fundraising over there.
What it is tied to that, that, you know, you know, s- s- community organi- you know, organizing to look at these type of causes and, and raise those dollars for community benefit. So it is a nice private separate effort that.
Yeah, and it is very much separate than, than the council. And so, um, and we have wanted someone from the Lacey Foundation to come. And so we finally, we finally got someone that just weren't quite ready yet because they were still setting up their five oh one C three. So we're really happy to have that report, by the way.
Uh, Councilmember Cox.
Thank you. Um, Jen, I may have missed it, but I, where are we now with the fundraising for the, um, the new museum and cultural center?
It's our gap from now to finish. Um, so the, yeah, so our, the, the heavy lift is the thirteen million dollar. Kind of covered by.
Right.
Yeah, it's far left columns or, or gap.
Yeah, so that's total project cost.
Seventeen.
Number that has kept up with, with the times.
Yeah, so the projected is in green and then the received amount is in the, uh, the red color. Um, so that's where the heavy lift is and it's, you know, it's this category here. So putting those puzzle pieces together, similar to what we're doing with the youth, um, Youth and Child Family Center, is just trying to figure out and, you know, and that's a good example to bring up because, um, one of the things that we've been following and, and been interested in is the DCIP, the Defense Communities Infrastructure Program. And we kind of looked at this project for that particular, um, funding. And it's looking like it fits in, you know, with the, um, military's, um, priorities better with the other project. So that's why I call it a puzzle, because there's like all these pieces and it's just a matter of, you know, fitting them together, um, in the right way and aligning missions, um, to make it happen. So.
So our number has been keeping up with rising costs?
Um, actually, no, I will need to add inflation to this number.
Does that say thirteen?
Yes.
Should have brought them. Okay, well, uh, if, if we have nothing further.
I, I would say four point seven million is a pretty substantial number from starting with zero.
It is, it is. And if we can just get one person listening to write that thirteen million dollar.
It's, it's not as fast as any of us would want it to be. Um, but I will say, you know, from the day that, um, I think it was six years ago when I started and, and we, we, some of us, I remember, um, Councilmember Greenstein was there for sure. And, and Councilmember Stedman walking through the warehouse. You know, one of my first times in through the warehouse and kind of, kind of looking at the site, looking at the potential there. So. We've done a lot. It's just a, a lot slower than anybody.
And Lenny had mentioned the importance of having public buy-in too. And there's a lot of public money there, so this shows support for it. So just need to just keep going. Knows the grindstone.
Well, it appears as though we've reached the end of our agenda. Uh, and if there is no objection, I will call this meeting adjourned if you all are attending.